We'll get started here as soon as we get all of our technical issues taken care of.
Our recording, I didn't hear the voice from the sky.
Okay, sorry for delay there. We are ready to call to order the July meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First item, roll call.
Yes, Koleski, Chikovitz.
Here.
Bealy, Strayer.
Here.
Berthold.
Here.
All members present.
All right, all set. Next item on the agenda, copy the minutes from our June meeting. We had a copy in our packet. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Is your mic on? I'm trying.
There is a correction to the minutes because we know for a fact that Cindy did not go ahead and second a motion that she evoted against, but we don't know who went ahead and supported it.
Page two.
Page two.
Second, second full paragraph down.
Hmm.
Page three.
So page three. Yes, it is page three. Okay, last page.
I probably, I mean, I don't know that it matters. I probably didn't support that motion since I voted against it, but.
No, you, you did support it, but you.
It's more an emotion, but then.
Yeah.
Okay, great. That sounds like me. I just questioned that. That's all.
Right.
If there are no additions or corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move we approve the mittens. The minutes as written.
I second.
All favor I.
I.
Posed. Okay, minutes adopted. New business, first item we have for thirteen fifty-seven South Main Street, temporary use. We have someone to speak on that? Just step up and give us your name, please, and give us just a brief description of what it is you'd like to do.
I'm Gail Dunaway with Civitan of Lenaway, and we would like to sell Christmas trees. The lots are going down. We're one of the last standing in Lenaway County. People come as far away as Jerome to buy our Christmas trees. And we have some fabulous ones, so we can't do it unless we get our permit.
And this is the same place you've been.
Same place, yes.
To what has been going on in the last.
Nothing changed. We used all the fencing and whatnot from fairgrounds and then we set up and we take it down.
And it's looking for a five-year temporary use permit is what we're requesting.
That would be really nice.
On the papers.
Okay.
November twenty-fifth through until the twenty-fourth with the hours being three to eight weekdays and ten to eight on weekends.
Correct.
Okay.
Any questions, commissioners?
I just want to point out the dates are from what you requested last year. So they wanted shorter dates last year.
It's always the, the day after Thanksgiving, we start selling.
They wanted to give you guys extra days just to.
Maybe as a cushion, we usually sell out in two weeks, but.
Yep, just wanted to remind everybody.
Okay. Hey, anybody in the audience on this?
I think it's great.
Anyone online wish to speak to this item? All right.
Mr. Chairman, because it's a five-year permit, when the motion is made, do we need to change November twenty-fifth to the wording that says the day after Thanksgiving?
That would be a good idea.
All right, that would make sense.
For temporary use, we do have some items we need to look down through quickly here. The temporary use permit is compatible with various provisions of this chapter. This is a zone, a commercial area. They're requesting temporary use for retail sales, so that meets the criteria. Number two, the temporary use is reasonable use of land compatible with the general plan, land use designation, and zoning classification. Once again, commercial use and a commercial zoning. Find there. Number three, temporary use will not impede the reasonable use of land or the early development of the land in the immediate vicinity. There's never been a problem there in the past, plenty of room, so not an issue there. Number four, temporary use shall not adversely affect the adjacent uses, building, or other structures. Once again, parking lot, no problem. Number five, temporary use will not endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Can't see where selling the Christmas trees is going to be a problem. Number six, provision for adequate traffic, excess circulation, off-street parking, pedestrian safety have been provided and will be maintained during the operation use. They have it cordoned off with a fence like in the past, never been a problem, should not be this time. Seven, the granting the temporary use permit is made subject to these conditions necessary to preserve the general welfare, not the individual welfare of any particular applicant. Once again, anybody else could apply for this same way. So I find they meet all the necessary criteria. If there are no other questions, entertain a motion.
Um, with the findings of fact, all having been in the affirmative, I would move adoption of the resolution that staff has provided with the notation that the start date is the day after Thanksgiving in each of these five years.
So we have.
More.
Port from motion.
Support.
We have support. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Sir, Bealy.
Yes.
Strayer.
Yes.
Koleski.
Yes.
Berthold.
Yes.
Chikovitz.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Sell those trees.
Always selling.
All right, next item on the agenda, page twenty-three, twenty-one, nine oh six James Street. I think we have someone here to speak on that. Step up and give us your name, please, and.
I'm Jake Wright. Adrian Steel would like to put an addition on their plant to house a new paint line. Um, we'll go in the southwest corner of their property and due to the configuration of the site and the uh, where the paint line is located, they'd like to request a variance to recruit, decrease their setback requirements in that location.
Hey, did I see anything exactly what the setbacks are going to be, or I just saw what they requested, I mean, but.
Yes, I put them in the resolution. So it's a forty-foot setback to the variance to south. Um, so they would actually be five foot away from the lot line, which.
Thirty-five foot.
Forty foot, so it would be ten feet from the south because it's fifty feet. Forty-five feet from the southeast, so it would be five feet from the southeast lot line, ten feet from the south lot line.
Chairman, what are the required setbacks?
It would be fifty for those.
Fifty for those on any of those sides.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, it is, it is a weird space because they do with the size of the building and the size of the operation and it being industrial, they do touch streets on almost every single side.
Already.
For the, except for the train tracks.
And generally, train tracks are closer to a building for loading, aren't they?
I'm not sure what the history of those train tracks were.
Uh huh.
Um, I don't, I don't know if they were ever used there. It doesn't look like they were. Um, the image that I gave you guys shows kind of how the building sits as it is. It's already pretty much on the setback line to begin with. I did speak with Fire Chief Massengale. He is fine with where that building would go.
That's what you guys said. Did you have to do the second?
Yeah. Here's what they're proposing.
Oh, okay.
It's no worse than what they're there.
Yeah, so they're going to add right here.
Commissioners, questions?
We're just looking at Mike's map and our map, see what's happening here. So they're going to add here.
While you're doing that, anyone in the audience to speak on this?
I will say on your very last page of all of your packets, there is a site plan. This is kind of tacked on at the end as usual. Yep.
If you'd like to come up and give us your name and your comment.
Hello, my name's Don Underwood. I'm the plant manager at Urban Industries, the company right behind Adrian Steel. Just some concerns, our plant power poles run down that side of the roadway and right away. Um, the rate, the train track is utilized by the railway and there is quite a bit of traffic there and we move oh approximately two thousand tons of material exporting out of there and we bring in scrap at about four hundred tons a day daily. So we're just looking at the impacts to urban uh, with truck traffic, train traffic, and our power and, and what impacts that would have.
Could you show us on your.
Where are you?
Yeah, where you are. We're, we're looking at this, so.
So what's behind?
So. Yeah, when you say behind.
We disturb property from here, this side of the track.
Okay, okay.
They're here.
Over here.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And this is your building here. This is all, this is yard, all, all your property, understand?
This is the accessway to the scales to the scrapyard. That's the scrapyard. That's the entrance.
Yep, yep, okay, got it.
Okay.
So our power poles for plant power run down this side and down along here and into the plant.
On the ground road right away.
Well, come across there. We just want to make sure what, what came back.
So, Mr. Chair, if I, if I may jump into answer his question, so what they're proposing is on the corner of this here, so that this would not be any more imposing than what's already there.
Right, but regular, where it crosses, they're going to come all the way out here or?
They're gonna, they're gonna come to here. So do see where that, see where their gray is here?
Hmm.
They're not going to be imposing any more than anything else is.
Right.
We're just making sure.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I'm just making sure they understand. It doesn't look like it's going to be imposing in your area. That would be something for them to answer, but I don't see that how.
Yeah, the applicant can answer that, but any power poles that are there are in an easement. And any, obviously the tracks have the easement that they have, and so they can't impose on either of those.
But we just want to make sure the buildings, the things that have to be done or any. Even though for five days we got raised and there's things running, they have to be running all the way over set. Bringing lines to the road during trucks, we need to know all of those interruptions.
See applicant have any information on that for us?
If there's any interruption required, we'd be working with you through the whole process, keeping up speed on what's going on throughout construction and design.
But you don't know whether there will be.
At this time, I don't think there would be any interruption.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience to speak on this? Anyone, excuse me, anyone online speak on this?
If they were, they just, we hear, right, okay.
Hey. The grant of variance, we have to go down through some finding of fact. And it's different than the findings we had for temporary use. We have to find, yes, for all these particular items before a variance can be granted if we choose to do that. Let's look down through these items, finding effects. Number one, there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships which prevent carrying out the strict letter of this ordinance. These hardships or difficulties shall not be deemed economic. That should be evaluated in terms of use of a parcel, a particular parcel of land. You know, they're looking, obviously, it's a very unique, and that kind of falls in number two. Angles that they have here, the existing configuration makes this probably the only point I think that they could locate their addition to serve what they need. If there's no objection, I would find yes for number one. Number two, the genuine hardship exists because unique circumstances, physical conditions such as narrowness, shallness, shape, topography of the property involved, or to the intended use of the property that do not generally apply to other property uses in the same zoning district and shall not be recurrent in nature. It has nothing to do with the use, that's fine, but it does fall into the shape of the land. Uh, is a very unique piece of property uh, because of its shape and its shallness there. So I would find yes for number two, if there's no objection. Number three, the hardship or special conditions or circumstances do not result from actions of the applicant. Uh, once again, this is kind of a, a tough one at times. Uh, you can say that anything that requests is resolved them, but uh, based on the request, this is where the place they can fit this in. So I would think that, uh, that would not necessarily be their, uh, their condition of the property is not the result of their situation. Yes, for number three.
I am starting to struggle and would like someone to talk me off the ledge here. Um, last month, we told the dog guys you're right that this property is not right as it exists for you to do what you want to do, and our answer to you is you can't do it there. So how is this different?
Well.
They would like to add this line, but their property doesn't allow it.
So I would say there's two things that are kind of unique here.
Help me out.
If I, hopefully I will. Um, three front yards, so that's unusual. Very few lots have three front yard setbacks which impose uh, a much greater distance on the site than the typical lot, uh, which would have a one. And then number two, I mean, I think you have to look at the scale of what exists there already. And its evolution over time. I mean, the idea that to add a paint line to your business, uh, you would have to move, uh, you know, having made an investment like that into the site uh, is unique. I mean, it's not like it's a ten thousand square foot building, right? This is a many, 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 many thousands square foot building. I don't know, Jason, you know how many, but it's a lot. And I, I would dare say it's one of the largest buildings in town. And so in order to facilitate their new operation, uh, this is the place that they can do that. It's not really reasonable, it seems to me, to say, well, just relocate to another site where you have more room. I, I think that is a unique circumstance in this case.
The one last month, and that would differentiate from the one last month, which was something brand new. There was no existing facility.
Correct, exactly right.
Adrian Steel had a, had a blank lot and they wanted to build all of this, we would say no.
Yeah, it'd be a whole different story, correct.
All right.
But part of what we talked about last week too, or last month was that business, the dogs were located very close to the street and that was causing a hardship to residents where that's not going to be the, the case here.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you off your ledge?
Finding yes for item number three.
Yeah, okay, sure.
Yeah. Item number four. The variance will be in harmony with the general purpose intended of this ordinance and will not cause substantial adverse effects upon surrounding property, property values, and the use and enjoyment of the property in the neighborhood or district. It's pretty much their whole block, like we said before, it is industrial. Uh, concern, one concern was mentioned, but, uh, I don't think that's going to affect their use of their uh, business or property behind them, so I will find yes for number four. Number five, that grain is variance will not confer the applicant any special privileges denied by this ordinance to other lands, structures, or buildings in the same district. Well, once again, if another property, another business, another industry had a request like this, they have the right to apply for this and we will review it, uh, just as we're doing this one. So I find yes for number five. Uh, number six, that the variance requested is the minimum amount necessary to overcome the inequality inherent in the particular property to mitigate the hardship. Based on what city is presenting to us, that's what they have done. Uh, they basically uh, fit this right in as close as they can to what they have. So I would say, uh, yes for number six. Uh, number seven, the variance should not permit the establishment within district or any, uh, use which is not permitted by the right uh, within the zoning district. Uh, use for which a special use permit, uh, this is not a use permit, so find yes for number seven. So unless there's any objection, uh, find yes for all seven items under finding a fact. Unless there's any further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Was the, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Was the item that was sent out via email this afternoon, I question whether it was relevant to this particular request.
Right.
Uh, I, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, well, we couldn't really ascertain what it was about, but this was the closest and there is sort of a vacant parcel of uh, the beacher end of James Street, so we thought maybe that's what they were referring to, but we don't know.
Couldn't really tell, and it didn't necess, and it did not address any specific issues with this particular piece of property. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't, that we just didn't forget it entirely.
Right, no, I mean noted, we had a, a letter that expressed concerns about a vacant lot in the vicinity of Oak Street. Um, can't tell exactly what it was referring to, but it did not appear to be referring to this issue.
No, I didn't think it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I will say at the very least, there, that would be the only place that would have received a notice.
Okay, okay.
It is my assumption.
I think it was just somebody who got a notice that said, would you like to comment? And so they did comment, you know, on just a whole string of things. Yes, exactly.
And they didn't leave any information to comment on, all right. All right, we're back to looking for a motion.
Given that the findings of fact were in the affirmative, uh, I would move adoption of the resolution the city has provided for approval of the variance as requested with the stipulation that the, uh, project folks coordinate with the neighbor to make sure that there isn't any interruption of, of their necessary utilities or access.
Do we have support for that motion?
Support.
Support.
Do we have questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, uh, roll call vote.
Yes.
Bealy.
Yes.
Strayer.
Yes.
Koleski.
Yes.
Chikovitz.
Yes.
Berthold.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All set and we'll all be good neighbors. Next item on the agenda, six ninety Riverside Avenue. I guess before we get to this, I have one question. This is something a little bit different we have coming to us. I don't know if you've had so.
What? Uh, we've had a similar request in the past. We had cornhole behind Amvets.
Yeah.
Uh, which is similar.
That was for an ongoing, wasn't it, for a weekly or something?
That was a longer duration, but same concept. It's a temporary use of land, uh, that, um, uh, you know, otherwise would fall under those provisions of the zoning order, and so, um, you know, that's you know, that's the closest analogy I can give you.
Just for my clarification, what would determine if we would request something like this? If I want to have, you know, a group at my house, we're gonna put a potluck and raise money for something?
A resident, a residence wouldn't require that, but since they're a business, it's a temporary use of their land.
I was trying to get some clarification of why we were.
Well, it's, it's a matter of degree, really. I mean, if you have the yard sale, you know, is that a temporary use? No, but we talked last meeting about a ongoing flea market. Well, you know, once it's, it's got some, uh, significance to it, then it, it does fall into that category. Now, these kind of things can be disruptive to neighbors. We had, uh, somebody who engaged in what should have been a temporary use, uh, last weekend. Got a lot of complaints about it. Um, you know, we've advised them that in the future they're going to need come before you unless we amend that of zoning ordinance, of course, as we go through our process, but, um, you know, the right approach is what the applicant is doing, coming before you, uh, making sure that the neighbors have a chance to comment if there are any comments and
I'm looking for.
Make sure it won't be disruptive to the neighborhood.
Isn't this sort of like the bully, the bully, they were doing?
Yeah, the same thing. Again, they do it more frequently, but same, same basic.
So one, one other thing after speaking with the applicant is this is something that they want to do uh, more than just just this year, so they do want to do it one year and then they're going to apply and I'll let her speak to that later. Um, but they also, one other difference is they're having a beer truck with TBC um, to come see brewing company and she can explain how that's going to work, but for the food truck ordinance, we don't allow beer trucks. Um, um, so the temporary use would allow the beer truck then.
Okay.
You could allow it in that way, so that this is a reason, another reasoning why she's.
Well, that's the clarification I was looking for.
It's a more intense use than just having a cornhole.
A little bit more intense, yes.
Hmm. I'm sorry, we just had a little.
Oh, no, you're fine.
Had a little discussion up here. Give us your name, please, and tell us what it is you're requesting.
I'm Summer Perez. Um, me and Dr. Bree, we own Spectrum Chiropractic and.
I'm Summer Perez, um me and Dr. Bree, we own Spectrum Chiropractic and Health. Um so something that we really want to do is um. Over time, I've donated a lot of backpacks and there's a huge need for it in the community. I think just myself, I've donated over seven thousand. And so um after talking to a lot of the schools. Um just because I've been involved with them and we both have and giving back, um backpacks with school supplies are a really, really big need. And we thought a really cool way to get the community involved would be to throw a cornhole event. With, you know, it being such a big cornhole community, hosting a public event like this would be something that would be really fun to raise money and then. All the money would go to all of Adrian Public Schools, Madison, onset and Tecumseh. And then any of the money that is raised after will go towards um other school function programs, so like. Um there are some need for uh like. Lunchrooms, lunchroom, uh like the, some of the meal reduced programs have been taken away from some of the schools. So going in and paying off, you know, lunch balances and doing like good deeds with that type of stuff, but mainly just having a way for the community to get involved and give back to the kids and. So you know, having a cornhole tournament on our property and we have the space for it would just be a really cool way to get the community involved and. That's about all I have for you. And if you guys have any questions.
Proposed as a one day.
Yes, yep, so we'll be doing it from like twelve to six P M.
And what and what is the day?
July twenty ninth.
By twenty ninth, okay.
Can you talk about how it will be laid out?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Actually some on our map, it's just hard to read.
Sorry, my handwriting is a little squiggly.
Yeah, but I think it looks like we have some diagrams on here. But I can't.
I can come show you guys if it's easier for you to see. Yeah.
Will you be serving beer from twelve to six?
No, I just, you can guys just point. It's hold it up this way, the most.
Okay, so right up here is where we'll be closed off, so people can't, like the public can't access it. We're gonna have a food truck right here. And then a food truck right here. And then the beer truck is small. So it would, it would be right in this area and we'll have a beer tent, so people would be. It would be in the confined area and then we'll have a tent for sitting and then this will all be brought down for the tournament, so it's not touching any neighbors' properties. We go all the way.
Oh, that's your property way over there.
Yeah, yep, so we. From this little square.
Where will parking be?
Um we got commissioned on the church across the street to use the.
Which church is that? Okay.
You guys still my pen somewhere? Okay.
Okay. The people park across the street. Any idea how many people?
Right now.
Good day will come.
You know, um so how I'm, how we're thinking it is we'll have kind of waves of things because people can, people that apply for the tournament. Obviously, if they come and go, they'll lose. People are probably, it's probably gonna be like a come and go thing, so think of it as like an open house. Not everyone will be there at once. Most people will come at their time of tournament play. And then people will stay, obviously, if they're continuing on in the tournament, um depending how many people register. Um. You know, I would love to give you like a definitive number of registries, but people kind of love the. Last minute impact of, you know, suspense, so people sign up typically a little late. Um.
Do you have a limit in mind?
No.
Okay.
Nope, we do not. We have two tournaments going, um so it should move people pretty quick. We have a backyard and a competitive. Um so with that being said, people would be able to kind of move through the tournament a little quickly. Um. But besides that.
Run up to like seventy teams in.
Yep, so Sam Hernandez, um he's helping us run the tournament. He uh works with. Austin Bernard with Killshot's Cornhole. He runs a lot of the tournaments. He said he could run about seventy teams at a time up in about four hours, period.
Uh you said Tecumseh Brewing, you said on the beer?
Yes.
They manage for all the sales, all the IDs, all they they care about.
Yep.
Anyone in the audience to speak on this? Anyone online to speak on this? Commissioners. Questions?
Those hundred and forty people will be running into the offices to use the bathroom?
Nope, so I put a um. It's a porta potty.
Ah, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we do have two restrooms in the office. More, but.
We have a handicap accessible bathroom, so if someone was in a wheelchair and we needed to open the office for that use, that that is an option. For, you know, special circumstances.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Everybody good to move on? Go pondering?
This is in my neighborhood and I don't have any problem with it at all.
That means you can come and join the fun, you know?
Yeah, I'll stop by and take some pictures.
I would love that, absolutely. You're more than welcome.
Okay, uh temporary use, just like our first time we had, we have some items we need to go down through and uh. Find in the affirmative. Number one, the temporary use permit is compatible with the various provisions of this chapter. Um. It is requesting a temporary use, which is. I don't want to try, I want to say this. But it can uh it can fall into that category. Uh. I'm babbling here because I'm not sure what I want to say. Yes, for number one, how's that? Okay. Number two, the temporary use is reasonable use of land. Compatible with the general plan, land use designation. Um it appears uh complies with this, it is a a business, so it's not. A residence, so I would find yes for number two. Number three, temporary use will not impede reasonable use of land or early development land in meet a vicinity. Once again, I can't see where this is gonna be promised, just a one day, so it should not impede anything. No roads are being blocked off, so. Fine there. Number four, temporary use, so not adversely affect adjacent uses, buildings or other structures. Uh once again, I don't see that as an issue. Number four, temporary use. Uh will not endanger public health, safety, general welfare. Uh this is located in the prop, in the uh the rear of the property, so general public should be fine. As long as there's no wild throwing bean bags or any cornhole bags, they'd be good. Number six, provisions for adequate traffic access, circulation, off-street parking, uh pedestrian safety. Have been provided for or would be maintained during the operation use of the activity. Uh you talk about plenty of parking, that parks across should be plenty sized. There's no blocking off the road. Um I don't see an issue with number six. Number seven, the grain of uh temporary use permit is made subject to these conditions. Uh necessary to preserve the general welfare, not the individual welfare of a particular applicant. Um don't find any issue with that. But find for number seven. Unless there's a question or a comment from anyone. I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, go ahead. You're on a roll.
Mister Chairperson, with uh you having found in the affirmative for all of the uh require. Required stipulations, I would move for adoption of the resolution the staff has provided and approval of the temporary use permit. Uh for six ninety Riverside Avenue. For July twenty ninth from noon until six P M.
Okay.
That was a motion.
I support that.
Alright. Do we have any questions about the motions? Am I any question we have about motion?
No.
Okay, want to make sure we're all good? Seeing no questions, uh roll call vote. Strayer.
Yes.
Kaleski.
Yes.
Chikovitz.
Yes.
Ely.
Yes.
Berthold.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. You're all set, get those bean bags flying. Uh let's see, any other off my agenda here? That's it. Somewhere I had it. Oh, there it is. Any other old business anything to deal with? Nothing there? Any comments from staff?
Uh next month I won't be here, I will be.
But we're not having a meeting now. No.
No. I would hope that would be me, um but I won't be here, but there will be two items on your agenda for temporary uses, just.
Greg is gonna be running things then?
I I will handle it. I I feel confident I could handle it. I I hope my boss can do it.
Okay, and that is what August.
Or the August first.
August first. Any public comments? Hearing none, zoning board meeting is adjourned and planning commission will begin in just a few months.
Thought we were gonna be on the deck. And he came early to.
Yeah, I'd go ahead and do that. They good for something?
What, you saw you saw both signs?
Saw one of your science fans, but it was out of pride and city elements.
Well, the one that's right up.
The Curtis Road.
Is that? Yeah, that's where I grew up. Uh people live, bought it.
Oh, yes.
She lives. She lives in uh, she was actually. I would go on there.
There's no rules against that, is there?
Make sure that's right in the right questions.
Playing pickleball on our new court. I'm sure he is. Sure he is. He doesn't go to work. None of them do. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, 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 yeah. It's raining out now. I didn't get, you didn't give me one. There's something, there's something new, right? Oh, there's two sets there. There's something new, right? I thought, wasn't there an email this morning about something? Yeah. Addition, oh, but wasn't there something? Oh, I thought it was a new.
Is that this?
Oh.
This email?
Hello. Okay.
Whenever you're ready, Jeremiah. Okay, folks, we will call to order the July regular meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. Uh Jeremiah, if we could have the roll call, please.
Uh Chikovitz.
Here.
Love.
Present.
Wetherby.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Watson. Taylor.
Present.
Gals. All members present.
Very well, thank you. Uh. Next item on our agenda is consideration of the minutes of our June sixth meeting. Commissioners, you have copies of those. I presume you've had an opportunity to review the June sixth minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, we would entertain a motion for their approval.
Who approval is written, sport?
Taylor and. Chad, was that you?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? June minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is case number twenty-three twenty-two, a zoning exception and site plan. Permit for three seventy-five Lawrence Avenue. Is there someone here to address that? Sir, if you'd step to the podium, give us your name, please. And uh. Give us the thumbnail sketch of what it is you're proposing to do.
Uh my name's Alec Riffle, I'm representing uh T C M I, M F C, uh. We were approved. Two years ago. Nothing's changed, um. We're. We're applying for uh, well. We're requesting, uh I guess. Site plan approval for the use of. A marijuana manufacturing, like a processing license. So.
What what is it you're doing? You're so. So you're doing something additional to what you're already doing. What is it you're doing currently there?
What am I doing here or what am I proposing?
Facility.
You're a growth facility, correct?
Yeah, we're currently a growth facility, uh attached to its another twenty-five thousand square feet.
So currently you have a growth facility that you once had on a.
A processing.
Thank you. That's what I was looking.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. And you already are approved for the growth facility.
Right.
Yes, okay. Um. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Riffle? Riffle?
Correct, yeah.
Jeremiah? So um. I think it was two years ago you guys opened, right? So two-ish or at least began?
Um so the processing facility's never been open.
No, but you might be. The grow, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so when they applied, they applied for both the grow and the processing. Um those are both separate zoning exceptions, but. Since they they were approved, um with the site plan that you see, no, no changes have been done. Um there's three different, I believe, entities in there. There's Mem Gardens, there's you guys, and then there's. I believe five-five-four or U five-five-four.
We're five-five-four, I think.
So there's five forty, which is next door to them. So there's three separate grows, um and they would be the first processing in there. They did get approval. But because they never pulled any permits and per those zoning ordinance, without pulling permits makes the zoning exception void, so this is them. Reapplying to you for the same thing that you've approved. Um the only thing that staff has really noted that's changed uh is on. Google Maps, funny enough, they recently went through and you can see a dumpster outside, which I've spoken with. Alex about this, that the dumpster needs to be inside or put a dumpster enclosure outside. Um I think we've agreed that it's gonna stay inside, um. The other is that there's a dying evergreen in the back and he's he's agreed to replace that. Um and that's just part, but that's doesn't really necessarily have to be part of the zoning exception, that's just part of the previous.
Part of the site.
Yeah, pre- as as per the previous one that was there.
Isn't, isn't this the building that we needed the curve for the fire truck to go around?
Yes.
And that's.
And and I believe that got put in.
That got addressed.
I believe it did. I Eric has not said anything else about this. And I asked him to review it again, I believe he was fine with it. I can double check with him again, but I I believe he's been fine with it so far because they've all gotten. Uh C O's as far as.
Yeah.
I know.
So when we passed this two years ago, we. We did approve the reduced parking, right?
We did because the.
Parking available on the entire site.
The building is so massive in scale with so many uses that the. Um. Parking would have been outrageous, so it was reduced mostly because it's manufacturing, to be honest, there's not. I mean, I I don't think that your parking is overflowing, is it?
No, no, but if it ever does, we have the ability. There's those two lots across the tracks. Um that are owned by the same owner of our property that we could eventually overflow into. They need work, though.
Uh yeah. We want you to bring them up.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. They need lighting and there needs to be a sidewalk that bridges the gap. But. We're kind of a ways from that.
Um. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on the on the application for either a zoning exception permit? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on the, on the application for either a zoning exception permit? Or on the site plan we will be reviewing? Anybody online? Okay. Um, relative to zoning exception permit, and I realize that we've already done this, but just to go through the formalities. Uh, we need to consider if the proposed use meets the specific requirements for a site plan for this use. We'll talk about that in a second. We need to consider if granting the permit would have an adverse effect on the environment or the value of surrounding properties. We need to consider if the proposed use is compatible with the adjacent and surrounding properties. Then we need to consider if the proposed use is consistent with the ci- city's future land use plan. Relative to the specifics, uh. We presume that the applicant has a valid license for this operation, or at least we'll be getting one if you don't have one already. And that you'll have the necessary city permits. That no equipment will be used in the processing that recreates noise, dust, vibration, glare, fumes, odors, or electrical interference. Detectable outside of the building by normal senses. Uh, that all the processing and operations will incur, will occur within the enclosed building. And let's see, I think that's probably the ones that we need to be concerned with, and I believe if you will affirm for us that those are all.
Yeah, absolutely.
All taken care of. Commissioners, uh. They appear to have met the general requirements and specific requirements for a zoning exception permit. And if we so chose, could approve that. Relative to the site plan, uh, staff has mentioned. The desire, the, the need for having the, uh, dumpster being closed or inside the building. And the replacement of one tree that has come and gone. And with those exceptions, or with those stipulations, I think we could approve this if everyone is in agreement.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to that effect.
Support.
Watson and Taylor. Commissioners, any additional discussion? Horton, anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay. If there is no additional discussion, then we could have a roll call vote.
Yes.
Uh, Gauss?
Yes.
Watson?
Sport.
Weatherby?
Support.
Love?
Yes.
Johnson?
Sport.
Taylor?
Support.
Chokovitz?
Yes.
Motion passing hands.
All right, well, thank you much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Next item on our agenda.
You might not want to go outside.
I, I thought that had come and.
Oh, wow.
I, I walked over. How gracious of you. Next item on our agenda is case number twenty-three, twenty-three, a, uh. Application for home occupation at eleven twenty-one East Butler Street. Ma'am, if you'd give us your name and tell us what it is that you're proposing.
Uh, my name is Anita Artistry. I'm a licensed esthetician in the state of Michigan since two thousand and eight. Uh, I do skincare, facials, waxing, eyelashes, um. Much like massage services, I'm not a massage therapist, there is massage involved in my services. Um, but I have a large home with four bedrooms and I'm looking to make one of those bedrooms is where I perform services. Um, it's doesn't involve a lot of heavy equipment, it's basically a massage bed and a lamp. Um, it's one room of my house, a hundred and forty-seven square feet, um. One room of the home, um, minimal clientele, one person at a time, maybe one to three people a day. All my supplies are, that I sell is online, everything's online for the sales. Um, I am registered for the state of Michigan, um. With a business license, uh, I have an E N I number with the state of Michigan. Um, the signage on the house, I will plan to do a two-foot by two-foot sign. Um, attached to the house. Um, my parking driveway probably fits three cars. Uh, I don't, can't imagine the parking of one person at a time being an issue for the neighbors. Uh, I live in a very quiet neighborhood, uh, I can't imagine disrupting the neighborhood with what I'm doing. It's basically somebody coming to visit me, I do a service for them and then they are on their way, looking better than when they came.
Do you have particular hours of business, like, uh, days that you do business in?
Every day of the week.
Okay.
Um, it mostly during the day, uh, usually nine to three. And then Tuesdays and Fridays, I can take people later, uh, because I don't have my other job going on, so I could go to like seven at night.
No, no late night business, no.
Uh, we'd be done by seven.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Understood. Other questions for the applicant?
So, so you are proposing a, um, placard sign on the building?
A two-foot, I believe it says a two-foot by two-foot sign. Uh, very simple, I have a picture of what I'll be ordering, attached to the building.
So two square feet is permitted.
Two square feet, yes, that's what.
That's one foot.
That's, yeah, that's.
That's one foot by two, okay, that's what I'll order that, I didn't, okay, so, one foot. By two, I'm glad I didn't order that yet then. One foot by two foot, pretty simple.
Yep. As long as, as long as it's just flat and fits those dimensions, the details, we don't care so much. Yep. Other questions?
What do I do? No, not right now. I work, um, uh, for General Motors roadside assistance, actually out of an awesome, another room in my home. I work from home, I haven't done it. I was in other, I've been self-employed for about seven years, uh, in the county. A salons, uh, there was a laser center I was at, there was a laser I sent I was at about two years ago. Uh, and I signed a non-compete with them, and then I left them, so then I've been, um, stranded, not being able to do my business. I went to Temperance for last summer because it was out of the range of the non-compete. So I was doing services there, but my clientele is very much looking forward for me to come back and, uh, I really don't want to work. Under someone else and just pay them for room rent when I can simply do it out of my home.
Other questions? Thank you very much, I appreciate it. We did receive one correspondence relative to. This matter, and Jeremiah shared that via email. Uh, commissioners have an opportunity to read that.
I didn't see any email, when was that?
Uh, this afternoon.
No, you got it, it's favor today.
Sorry, I didn't check it.
In order to, uh, grant, uh, approval for a home occupation, we need to be able to, uh, we need to review, uh, the conditions. Uh, that are required for it. Must be conducted entirely within a single family structure, uh, and that is the case here, yes. It, the occupation shall be conducted solely by the person residing at the residence, that is also the case here, I believe. If I misstate these, you correct me.
Okay, yes, sir.
All business activity and storage will take place within the interior of the dwelling, there's no exterior view of any product or services.
That's true.
All inside. Um, no alteration to the exterior of the residential dwelling or accessory buildings or the yards is, is permitted, that's.
True.
Again. Um, it shall not, the business shall not generate a volume or character of pedestrian or vehicular traffic beyond that normally generated by homes in the residential neighborhood. We discussed that, and I think we're okay there.
Yes.
Um. Only off-street parking facilities, which are normal for residential use and are located in the premises, may be used, again, we discussed that. And there's not gonna be twelve cars parked out in front of your house, no.
No.
You're gonna have one or two clients at the most at one time.
Yes, one at a time, there couldn't possibly be two.
There would be no vehicles exceeding five tons gross vehicle weight, uh, again, I don't believe that's an issue. Uh, we discussed the signage that is limited to a two-square-foot, uh, nameplate. One foot by two.
One foot by two foot, that's what.
On that, that equals two square feet.
Okay.
Um. And no article shall be sold or offered for sale on the premises, except that which is produced within the dwelling. And we discussed that too, any products you sell are online.
Everything's online.
Yep. Um. And there's no explosives or combust- combustible materials that are stored and no activity that will interfere with radio or television transmission.
That's true.
And, uh, we also discussed the square footage used and that meets within, that is well within the requirements. Um, and shall not otherwise violate any of the city's ordinances concerning nuisance, fire, or hell. And again, none of those appear to be an issue. Commissioners, if we so chose, uh, having reviewed those con- uh, those stipulations, I believe that we could. Find for approval of this applicant.
Move to approve.
Support.
And the motion is to adopt the resolution the staff has provided.
Correct.
Okay, there's a motion, there is support for that motion, is there any additional discussion?
Do the comments of the neighbor have any bearing on this?
You tell me.
Well, I don't know, I'm just.
Did someone look into?
I, I'm not aware of any validity of to those.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? In that case, roll call vote, please.
Johnson?
Sport.
Weatherby?
Support.
Gauss? Taylor?
Support.
Chokovitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Watson?
Sport.
Motion passing hands.
Thank you, oh, thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Is there any other business to come before the planning commission this evening? Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on any other topics? Our hearing none, we would entertain a motion.
That way, to the, behind City Hall, no?
Hearing none, we would entertain a motion for adjournment. Support, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Who has the umbrella to take us to our cars?
It would have been, it would have been a good time then.
Oh.
Discuss all of those.
Yes, yes, any, anything? I brought a rain jacket. Well, usually, but not at the moment.
Bringing up now or something.